It's Jay. Good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council regular session. Today is Saturday, September twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is ten a.m. My name is Speaker William Low, and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Reverend Eli McHenry on the Broken Arrow Indian United Methodist Church to come up and say our invocation.
(Music)
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-135 is adopted. TR-22-136, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming nomination of Bruce Douglas to serve in the College of the Muskogee Nation Board of Regents. Sponsor Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joyce Steer. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent, and two to the quarter. In business print, that is, this morning will be valid. Next, I'm on the jet for minutes. We have been at from emergency session of sixteen twenty-two. Emergency session of nineteen twenty-two. Planning session of twenty-three twenty-two. Pre-agenda for regular session of August twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have most to approve?
Speaker.
Yes, President Marshall.
I make a motion that we approve all aforementioned minutes with any necessary changes.
Representative Matt Markson makes a motion to approve all minutes. Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent, and two to the quarter. In business print, that is, this morning will be valid. Next, I'm on the jet for minutes. We have been at from emergency session of sixteen twenty-two. Emergency session of nineteen twenty-two. Planning session of twenty-three twenty-two. Pre-agenda for regular session of August twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have most to approve?
Speaker.
Yes, President Marshall.
I make a motion that we approve all aforementioned minutes with any necessary changes.
Representative Matt Markson makes a motion to approve all minutes. Is the fourth minute?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. Approval, let's have asked. At this time, I recognize the continued devil be for being this important, so keep saying it will be recognized, sir. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Onto the order of bits. TR-22-F135, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute an amendment agreement with Indian Health Services supporting the assumption of many tribal shares from Indian Health Services We Woke Up. Sponsor Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker makes motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Anna Marshall. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. TR-22-136 is adopted. Mr. Bruce Douglas, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you very much, sir. We greatly appreciate your service to our tribe and to our students, sir. TR-22-137, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute an agreement for gas installation by the Oklahoma Natural Gas Company for the Three Ponds Elderly Housing Project. Sponsor Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. TR-22-136 is adopted. Mr. Bruce Douglas, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you very much, sir. We greatly appreciate your service to our tribe and to our students, sir. TR-22-137, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute an agreement for gas installation by the Oklahoma Natural Gas Company for the Three Ponds Elderly Housing Project. Sponsor Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-138 is adopted. TR-22-139, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation supporting the five-seventy-four Tribal Prayer Gathering of Sacred Nations. Sponsor Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt. Seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-139 is adopted. TR-22-140, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a license and service agreement with Tyler Technologies for the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsor Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt. Seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-140 is adopted. TR-22-141, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending TR-22-086. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a real estate contract for the purchase of property in Creek County, Oklahoma. Sponsor Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Harjo. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-141 is adopted. TR-22-142, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief to execute a memorandum of understanding with Sacan Fox Nation, Sacan Fox Nation, Thaplacó Tribal Town, and the United States Department of Interior on behalf of its environmental programs for the purpose of creation of the Wilcox Oil Company Superfund Site Natural Resource Damage Assessment and Restoration Trustee Council. Sponsor Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-142 is adopted. TR-22-143, and this is, we'll have a substitute. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending TR-19-076. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation to suspend all special appropriations and donation as amended by TR-20-150, TR-21-080, and TR-22-128. Sponsor Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-143 is adopted. TR-22-144, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the principal chief, GOAB, and MNGE to enter into Amendment Number Four to loan agreement with BOKF, NA, DBA, Bank of Oklahoma, and the lenders party there to. Sponsor Representative Randall Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-22-147 is adopted. TR-22-148, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation supporting the expansion of the Oak Mulgy Mounds National Historical Park to form a new national park and preserve. Sponsor Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Roll call vote please.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
No.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, one against.
Fourteen in favor, one against. TR-22-148 is adopted. NCA-22-095, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the U.S. Department of the Interior Living Languages Grant Program funds for the benefit of Muskogee Language Department. Sponsor Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion, do we have any discussion?
Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA-22-095 is adopted. NCA-22-096, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation to the Muskogee Creek Nation Veterans Affairs Services Office to participate in the National Native American Veterans Memorial Dedication Ceremony located in Washington, DC. Sponsor Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion, any discussion?
Figure, I don't know if there's someone out here to, to discuss this.
Do we have anyone from the Veterans Office, or?
Yes, sir, Speaker, I'm on Zoom. I apologize, I couldn't be there today. I've been under the weather and was told that I probably needed to stay away another day before, and I don't think any of you guys wanted me to make you sick. But apologize for not being there today. But yes, any questions? This is a, this is a celebration, a dedication that will honor all American, American Indian, Alaska Native, and even our Hawaiian veterans. It will be a procession, procession of all the tribal nations as we make, as we dedicate this. It's a, the memorial is, is a welcoming space. It's for reflection. Can you hear me all right, sir?
I can, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. And it's, it's a, it's something that we as a tribal nation, and for all the times that we've served as tribal veterans, I think it's very important that we be there. We, we are taking ten of our able-bodied veterans to be able to, to participate in this. We haven't done anything formally yet until we were able to make sure that we, that we got your approval, but we ask today that you consider allowing us to take ten of our Native American Muskogee Creek veterans to, I think which is going to be a very important dedication of, for, for American veterans. Again, I apologize for not being there. I'm not a hundred percent today, but I didn't want to miss this. So I'll answer any questions you got, sir.
Yes, sir, Madon, and we hope you start feeling better, sir. Do we have any questions for the Director of our Veterans Affairs? Any questions, comments, Representative Hicks?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just trying to figure out the math on this. I apologize. Well, this is for ten, correct?
It's actually, we're taking, sir, we're actually taking ten veterans, but we're also taking support staff. And when we take the support staff, we will be taking EMT with us, we'll be taking a couple of live workers with us for security, we'll be taking, and some of the office staff to assist with the veterans. This, this time around, we're not able to take the panium with the veterans, so we'll take some of our staff to be able to help them during the trip and there and back.
So total seventeen?
Yes, sir, seventeen.
I was looking for a breakdown as far as the cost expense and such.
Okay, there, there should have been a one with it that showed the river spirit that we, we're giving, we're gathering all of them together the night before, so we will be able to give instructions and so forth. And we got a breakdown on the meals, we got a breakdown on what airfare is for all of them. If you don't have a copy of that, sir, I'll get it to you, but yeah, there is a copy of it. We also started this a little early, so we may be a little high on our airfare now, but at the time, we weren't sure because we didn't know how soon we would get this passed. So we put a little, we kind of fudged in some area in there just in case. I would rather give you money back than I have to come and ask you for more money if we didn't have enough, sir. But yeah, there's, there should have been an attachment to it that showed the cost of, estimated cost of passenger airfare, even the baggage fee, the lodging for transportation and overall. But I apologize, and again, I'm not there to give you one, but I'll be sure glad to get, get one to you.
Okay, I think it's a question that I was hearing toward because the amount and then the number of participants that are going.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, like I said, we did, we did give it, if you want to call it the fudge factor, just to make sure that we were, when we, when we first talked on the airfare, that was a while back, airfare was cheaper because if you, and as you know, if you can get your airfare ahead of time, you can save money. So we were kind of anticipating what it would cost if we weren't able to get it by the month before. So there should be some, this revenue that will give back to the, that will be given back. Like I said, again, I just, I just had a little fudge factor in there, so.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Speaker.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Representative Golden.
Yes, Mr. Nguyen.
Yes, ma'am.
On your eligibility requirements for the selection of the people that you will be taking of the ten.
Yes, ma'am.
How have you broadcast that? And how do you select which ones get to go and which ones don't?
Okay, we haven't, we haven't broadcasted yet, but what we're looking, primarily is we're looking for, this office in the past has taken World War II and Korean veterans to Washington. it's one of the, one of the cabinet, or council members that are on the committee with us, but yes ma'am, I, I agree with you.
Representative Golden, you get to go?
Yes ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? Uh, Grover, I, I say this in jest, but I would incorporate the Marine Corps way and do a pull-up contest, sir, to
Well, can the Air Force count? Can the Air Force just count?
By all means. Any other comments, questions, council representatives? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Sandra Golden?
No.
Speaker you have fourteen in favor, one against.
Fourteen in favor, one against, N C A twenty-two dash zero nine six is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash zero nine seven, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending M C N C A Title Twenty-two, Chapter Nine, entitled Emergency Management Authority. Sponsor Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
If there's any que, any questions, Mr. Howard is here.
Do we have any questions, comments, concerns, counsel for Mr. Bobby Howard? Hearing none? Well Bobby, I appreciate you being here and, and being available for us, but hearing no questions or comments, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Speaker you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, N C A twenty-two dash zero nine seven is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash zero nine eight, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families, American Rescue Plan Act, Childcare Supplemental Discretionary Funds for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Office of Childcare. Sponsor Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker make a motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Speaker you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, N C A twenty-two dash zero nine eight is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash zero nine nine, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, creating a new chapter, twelve, entitled Forestry Management and Fencing Act, in M C N C A Title Twenty-eight Lands and Minerals. Sponsor Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford? Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Speaker you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, N C A twenty-two dash zero nine nine is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash one hundred, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending M C N C A Title Thirty-seven, subsection two dash two zero three, to alter the distribution of funds. Sponsor Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt. Seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you Speaker.
Representative Joseph Hicks?
Is there anybody in the, uh, crowd or online that could kind of give me a little more information on this, kind of speak on a little bit?
Controller, are you still with us ma'am?
Yes, I am Speaker.
Can you address his question please?
Yes, so this is a kind of a continuation that has happened in the last couple of years, altering the distributions when, um, when we receive the distributions from the, um, the casinos, and certain percentages go to, uh, certain categories. So, in order to kind of, uh, help with the continuing growth of, of the nation and certain departments due to, you know, certain situations, kind of like the Margaret case, this just kind of helps have the additional percentage going to the, uh, gaming fund, which goes to, uh, towards the budgets for next year. It's, uh, taking, I think, the debt retire, uh, the permanent fund percentage into the gaming fund, um, for another year.
Can I help you sir?
Yes, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, oh, Representative Golden?
Yes. Yeah, I, we haven't, we haven't seen the budgets yet, and so I, I really can't support to do this at this time. Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Last call, comments, questions. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Randall Hicks? Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
No.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Speaker you have fourteen in favor, one against.
Fourteen in favor, one against, N C A twenty-two dash one zero zero is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash one zero one, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, transferring remaining fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two funds from the Gaming Operations Authority Board, G O A B, to Muskogee Nation Business Holdings LLC, M N B H. Sponsor Representative Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Sandy Golden. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Speaker you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, N C A twenty-two dash one zero one is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash one zero two, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending M C N C A Title Five, subsection two dash one one five, entitled Funding to Allow for Donations to M S W, Indian Baptist Association and the Oklahoma Indian Missionary Conference. And this is a substitute. Sponsor Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker make a motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo makes a motion to adopt. Seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. And this will require a two-thirds vote. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
No.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Abstain.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
No.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Abstain.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
No.
Speaker you have ten in favor, three against, and two to abstain.
Ten in favor, three against, two abstentions, N C A twenty-two dash one zero two fails. N C A twenty-two dash one zero three, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing a donation to Muskogee, Oklahoma Native American Association, M O N A A. Sponsor Representative Mary Crawford.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mary Crawford makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joyce Steer. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote please.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Speaker you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, N C A twenty-two dash one zero three is adopted. N C A twenty-two dash one zero four, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, appropriating funds for the Muskogee Creek Nation, Veterans Affairs Office to purchase motorcycles for military funeral and detail unit. Sponsor Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Speaker, um, I know the H E W Committee wanted some more information, and we do have Grover Nguyen online.
Hey, I, yes ma'am, Speaker. Yes, there was some question, they had a question about, uh, uh, one was insurance on, on these, because we initially, our thought was initially on this, would you, to use volunteer light horse officers who were off duty, so we wouldn't take for many of the duty officers. So the question come up of whether or not there would be a concern, whether they were covered first of all by, uh, our insurance, and yes, I've got emails from, uh, H R and also our, uh, our own risk management and the, the, the vehicles will be covered the minute, the minute we buy them. Now, the concern was, okay, are they covered, uh, for a workman's comp as, uh, if they would be injured? And that is something that, uh, I was, I wasn't able to talk to our A G because she was out of the office, but we've been communicating back and forth. And my last email with, uh, Joshua, H R, was he, he said that, uh, that the, the, the only issue was to change the job description, the scope of work for the light horse patrol department to include them, so they would be covered in case. Um, it seems to be that it's just a matter of changing the job descriptions, the co, uh, or scopes, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble talking, forgive me. And you know me, that's not really a problem, usually I run talking, you know. But, uh, it's, uh, it seems to be more of a formality, again, I talked to Mr. Booker and I talked to, uh, H R on that, and I, if, if Jerry is online, uh, I wonder if she can make a comment on this, because I have sent her my information. Uh, Ms. Weiser, are you online with us yet?
Attorney General?
Yes sir.
Yes ma'am, the floor is yours.
Yes. Good morning, and I apologize for not being there in person, uh, as my flight was delayed, however, um, I believe that there was some correspondence, uh, between my office and Kyle Haskins. Some of the concerns that I believe we shared, uh, or at least I'll speak for the Attorney General's office. We were concerned about the liability, uh, if someone were to be injured while they're in a volunteer status. Uh, and then also if they are reserve officers, were, were they be covered by our workman's comp insurance in case something were to happen? If the job description were to be amended, I would need to review that in order to, um, to have any changes to my opinion of this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
I have a question for you, if I may, uh, A G, you know, we, initially we started this to be able to, uh, help the, uh, light horse officers in, because they were short on, on officers. If we were just to take, go back and say, okay, these vehicles would you use strictly by on-duty officers? Would that solve our problem?
Um, my, my immediate response would be if there were some liability waivers, uh, you know, if they're using their, uh, I, I would need to look at it, but my knee-jerk response is they would need to, they would need to be signing liability waivers if they were using their own equipment, their own vehicles. That's, that was your question, correct?
Uh, no, no ma'am, uh, my question was, you know, initially we were going to, uh, we done this so that we would utilize the, the, uh, off-duty, uh, light horse officers, but as, call them volunteers, but now if, if we were to change it and say, okay, any on-duty light horse officer would be one that would man these vehicles, would that solve the problem? And no, we wouldn't, we, you know, we wouldn't have a, a concern whether they were volunteers, since they were volunteering, would it be covered? You know, that, that brought, brings up an issue, and one of the things that I talked to, uh, our, uh, I didn't bring up an issue, uh, the question come up, I guess, is, you know, we can, we always use our, our employees as volunteers when we have events going on, isn't this basically the same thing?
Well, I think you'd have to be careful, however, if it is within the scope of what their job duties and the performance would be, then, then they would be covered, like, with working, I mean, we've got light horse vehicles of all types. So I think that under that.
Point of order, point of order, A G. We'll, uh,
I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll, we'll give some time on the floor to the sponsor. I believe she, she has something to say, please.
Um, Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to postpone for thirty days. Evidently this is gonna require more discussion.
Exactly, yes ma'am. Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne has made a motion to postpone indefinitely, seconded by Representative Anna Marshall. Indefinitely, correct, and postpone indefinitely. For thirty days, excuse me. The motion is to postpone for thirty days. My apologies. Seconded by Representative Anna Marshall. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry? Speaker you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. NCA twenty-two dash one zero four is postponed for thirty days. Next item on the agenda, NCA twenty-two dash one zero five, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing an appropriation to purchase timber from the Larnie Holata allotment timber trespass. Sponsored Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Abstain.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Alan Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
What are you trying to get to?
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against, and one to abstain.
We have fourteen in favor, zero against, one abstention. NCA twenty-two dash one zero five. Is adopted. Yeah, Representative Hicks.
May I just add why I abstain to this?
By all means, yes, sir, please.
My reason for abstention is I do have family related to this property, so that's, that was the reasoning for my abstention.
I appreciate that, Representative Hicks, thank you. Last item on the agenda, and this is a substitute to NCA twenty-two dash one zero six. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to Muskogee Creek Lady Legends Organization. Sponsored Representative Sandra Golden, co-sponsor Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker. Motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Alan Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.